Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
The Exeter Planning Board meeting of January 25, 2024, in the Noack Room, and introduce the board. I'm Langdon Plummer, Chairman of the Board, and to my left is...
Gwen English.
And?
Nancy Valantra, Select Board Representative.
Gwen's a regular member, and Pete?
Pete Cameron, Clerk.
And regular member, of course. We have four people, that's a forum, so we're going to continue with our agenda. We have several sets of minutes to approve, which I'd like to do, so we don't get back on. So I think I'm looking at them in order that, yes, November 16. Now, it was a little while before Christmas.
I have a few, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
If I may?
November 16.
On line 69.
69, just a minute.
It's page 2 of 7.
Okay.
It says Granite State Communications, and it's Granite State Construction Services LLC.
It's Communication?
It's not Communications, so we'd strike the word Communications?
Yes.
And replace it with Construction Services LLC. Please. And the same thing on line 108, page 3 of 7.
Well, the rest is consistent in the minutes.
And again on line 141, page 4 of 7.
141. Okay, it's the same thing.
141.
Oh, that make a difference.
In bold, what's the bold?
Yes, it's in bold. And then if I may pause for a moment and ask Mr. Sharples a question. I asked you this question, you gave me the answer at another meeting, but I can't read my scribble. So on line 206 of page 6 of 7, an amended AOT, attendance of, I can't read what T means.
Alteration of Terrain.
Okay, and I was just going to recommend that we actually spell that out.
What line is that?
That's line 206.
206.
Yeah, at the end, an amended AOT was filed.
I'm assuming that's what he was saying, because he used AOT, he didn't say alteration of terrain, but I'm assuming that's what he meant, I don't know, I don't know any other...
But I don't, acronyms, I like to say.
Yeah, the only AOT acronym I know is alteration of terrain, and I'm sure that's it, so.
Yeah, and I have a tenants of something. Yeah, I have a tenants of terrain, but now that I, anyway, that's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Oh, thank you. Your memory is excellent.
No, I saw notes.
Pete, did you have anything on those?
Well, I would want to say that at least I had been wanting to put a hold on these for this discussion of the lot-line adjustment.
Okay.
That has been resolved. Now, does any, does the board want to have any discussion of what may have followed from that lot-line adjustment? I know it's not, I'm not going to do anything to the minutes, but at least to brief the board, if the board is willing to hear, as to some of the changes that have occurred with respect to this particular section of land.
Hmm, I don't know, I don't know.
How about we hold that till other business?
Okay, we can do that.
That makes sense.
Not rather minutes.
Yes, well, it was in connection with the minutes, so I'm satisfied with the language that's there now.
Okay, good, yep.
And that's, I had put a hold on it for that.
Okay, a motion then to approve, please?
I move to approve the November 16, 2023, meeting minutes as amended.
Seconded.
Moving seconded. Any further discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, thank you very much. December 7, please. Who would like to comment or discuss? Screwed nice the minutes.
Okay, I have a few. Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Okay, on page 2 of 8, line 44, Phillips is only spelled with one P.
Now, could you repeat that, please?
Yes, let me go back. Line 44, on page 2 of 8, Phillips is only, is spelled with one P, not two. Yeah, it's, it's...
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, and then the next one is on page 3 of 8, line 93, Ms. Valantra noted that the Select Board meeting, the word is, should be in there, is tomorrow.
Oh, is meeting tomorrow.
Yes, and I believe, just bear with me, on page 7 of 8, line 267, it says, Mr. Sharples indicated there explained, there are some that could be provided, I think we just need to fix that sentence, indicated or explained that there are some that could be provided, I don't know. It starts out with Vice Chair Brown asked about parking, and then Mr. Sharples indicated there explained, there are some that could be provided, there's probably a word I know.
I had that as a question as to whether there were two there's.
I think there might have been a word missing. Mr. Sharples indicated...
This is line 1267. There are some that could be provided, I have no idea what that means.
So what do we do?
I'm not sure what...
Strike the sentence?
Could.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so I'm going to recommend we just strike that sentence on the last sentence, or second sentence of line 267, that also continues on to line 268. And then same page.
Okay, we're striking the whole line?
I'll just recommend we do it, because we're not sure what it's supposed to say.
Okay.
So where are we now?
No, he did it, same page.
Oh.
But I'm now on line 275.
Okay, that's where.
And it starts out noted plenty of capacity, it says of, I think it should be if.
Yep, if.
Not fully, it's capacity?
If, the town manages public...
The second of.
Properly.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, we're on that page.
Yes, and I'm done.
Yep.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're good.
Line 273, at the end, cares should be cars.
Where cars, yes.
I'm all set. Let me see, I have...
You're all set?
I have...
I am. Enjoy that right now?
I don't know, on page 1, on line 27, Julie Gilman, Select Board Rep, I don't know if we want to include Select Board Rep to HDC and Heritage Commission?
I think that would be a good idea.
Because I think she was there.
As both.
Which line are you on?
27.
Page 1 of 8?
Yep, we got it, yep.
Yeah. So how do you want to say it?
I just, in the parenthesis, Select Board Rep to HDC and Heritage Commission?
She is, yeah, she is listed under both.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I just thought it, it just has Select Board Rep on this.
Under, oh, you know why?
Yeah, of Heritage, and then she says it again, okay.
Oh, I see.
You see what I'm saying?
Yep.
She already identifies Julie's in there under both Heritage and HDC as the Select Board Rep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Where am I, where am I not seeing it?
It's right under it. Do you mind if I show you?
27 and 31.
This is the Heritage Commission.
Oh, I see.
And then they have the store.
Oh, I see, then that's fine.
Yeah, I kind of say it's the same thing.
Yeah, 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 so that's a moot point, then. Skimming doesn't always fail.
So I think we're all set, Mr. Chair, if I may speak for both of us.
There's nothing here, the Chairman Plummer commented that we were making history this evening, with four boards meeting at once.
We were, it's, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I don't think I've ever had that experience before, and how many people showed up, that was impressive.
I have 280, oh, excuse me.
Oh, do I have two?
282, and the same comment on 292. That's showing a vote of four to one, and yet there were six people, I'm wondering who didn't vote on either the motion or...
I recused.
You recused yourself on that?
I did.
All right, that answers my question, then. Where, where did you?
At the beginning of the conversation.
Okay.
And it says that I left in my...
Oh, I beg your pardon?
No, it's fine.
I've got 248, that's what, that's the answer to the question.
Yes.
Okay.
Check in the map.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No comments? Hi, Jen?
Whoops, good heavens.
We're okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the December 7, 2023, meeting minutes as amended.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, yes. All right, and those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? I'd like to introduce Jen, our regular member.
Thank you, I apologize for my lateness.
And I've got a hold against you.
Thank you.
I was late too, so.
Oh, okay.
I just barely made it.
So Jen, we are working on now the minutes of December 28.
Okay.
Which both you and I attend.
Chairman seem to think we ought to catch up on our minutes.
It's a good night to do it.
Any comments here?
I don't have any.
I had 119.
Okay, Pete, why don't you take it here, 119, whoops.
I'm a little worried about Mr. Plummer opening the meeting at shortly after 1 a.m. in the morning.
Ah, yes.
No, shortly, excuse me, shortly after noon, I beg your pardon.
Wait a minute, are we on December 28?
What?
Are you on December 28?
We don't have one.
I'm on January 11, I'm sorry.
No, you jumped ahead.
Jumped ahead. I beg your pardon.
It's okay, you may...
Well, now let me go find where those minutes were.
Last January.
December 7.
December 7, at 7.
There's 28, all right, I was here. Therefore, I don't have any comments.
No comments, okay.
Unless I'm marking them.
Then I entertain a motion, please.
I move to approve the December 28, 2023, meeting minutes as submitted.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm back on to line 27. Yes, there were, there were five of us present, you and me, Jen, John, and Nancy, isn't that, that's six, or is that four? Well, there was five people present.
There were five of us.
One, two, four, five people present. All right, well, then we're, we... All were in favor, 500. It should be 500, I think.
Or that was the night that people was having a hard time connecting and...
Everybody voted, I think.
Okay.
Says all were in favor.
Okay, so I'm going to withdraw my motion, and I'm going to start a new one, that says I move to approve the December 28, 2023, draft meeting minutes as amended.
I'm sorry, I was on...
No, that's fine.
I was one step, I was one step ahead.
We caught it just in time. So those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
I seconded first.
And you're saying, excuse me, thank you. And how many oppositions or abstentions? None, okay, it's 4-0, I'm still not counting you, Jen, so you can scribble me, if that's necessary. And now, the final minutes, the latest ones was from two weeks ago, January 11, 2024, after Christmas, after our New Year celebrations, any comments?
119, again.
Okay, 119. 119 would be over here, so, yes.
I'll share.
I'm a little troubled with Mr. Plummer, our Chair, opening the meeting at 1:09 p.m.
Okay.
That's somewhat afternoon time, afternoon day.
So what time would you suggest?
Well, it was 8:09, wasn't it?
Well, he closed it at 8:09, that's in 113, so in 119...
He opened the second public hearing.
Yeah.
It can't be at 1 o'clock.
No, 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 but I'm just saying, he could have all done all of it in one, one minute, or in the same minute, I guess, yeah, so it'd be 8:09.
To me, it's something other than 1:09, I'm not quite sure what it is.
All I can... I would say 8:09 is fine, because I admit we went immediately from...
Because it doesn't seem like there was anything read there, unless somebody read something beginning at 1:15, but it doesn't look like it. Because that followed, if you go to 33, there was no introduction there. So I think that two amendment is okay.
Okay. Anything else you want to read through the mallet club?
Okay.
You want me to move?
You're all set?
I'm all set, I just want to make sure.
Certainly. I will still move.
All right.
As amended?
As amended.
And I'll second?
And I second, okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, then how about saying yes if we vote in affirmative?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye, yes.
Five. Any objections, abstentions? Gwen is included, so it's five, Gwen. Jen is included, so that's a 5-0.
And Gwen.
All right. Now, Mr. Sharples been patiently waiting for us, because we are moving now, public hearing, opening the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments for, plural, for 2024 town meeting warrant. Copies of the full text of the proposed amendments are available in the planning logs. So the first one is Amendment Number 1 Port Dash 24, to amend Article 4, District Regulations, Section 4.2, Schedule 1, colon, permitted uses, dash, notes of the extra zoning ordinance regarding residential conversions and accessory dwelling units. And I'll announce the next one, because Dave's going to lead us through both of those. Amendment Number 2 Dash 24, amend Article Number 6 Dash, excuse me, Cis Dot 19, mixed use neighborhood districts of the extra zoning ordinance by expanding the provision to apply to the C Dash 2 Highway Commercial District, and amending some of the existing language.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll be pretty brief, because we went over this in depth in those presentation about it at the last meeting about both of these, and we did make, the board did make some changes to the, talking about the Section 4.2 Schedule 1 notes regarding residential conversions and ADUs. And there were four changes that the board made from the last version that we presented at the meeting, that the minimum, the first one was the minimum lot size required shall be such that each dwelling is provided with, it used to be 30% of the minimum lot size, and it became, the board changed that to 25%. So then, a lot that meets the minimum requirement in the zone can get up to four units, assuming they meet the, you know, the other criteria.
Question, should 25 be spelled out the way 30 was spelled out?
Yes, we can, that's not a substantive change, nothing like that, that's just reiterating, I'll put that, I will put that in there. The last version, the conversions, little C, when we first presented it, this section, the structure, this provision, the structure has been a residence for a minimum of 10 years, was struck, that was added back, but 10 years was struck, and one was its, one was in its place. And was the other changed, just so, you know, people can't build it, they have to wait at least a year until they convert, if they build it new. The third change was the intent of D, 2D, under accessory dwelling units, accessory dwelling units shall not be allowed in manufacturing housing, period. But then...
Are you still working on this first page?
Still working on the first page, under accessory dwelling units D.
Down at the bottom of it.
Down at the bottom, 2D.
Got it, yep.
It would be, you add, instead, it was accessory dwelling units shall not be allowed in manufactured housing, and the board added, unless located in a zoning district that allows manufactured housing.
Yes.
And the final one is you struck the special exception requirement for ADUs, for accessory dwelling units. Residential conversions, the prior version and the existing zoning required special exceptions for residential conversion, which is up to four units, and a special exception for ADUs, which is...
So I, I think that two amendment is okay.
Okay. Anything else you want to read through the mallet club?
Okay.
You want me to move?
You're all set?
I'm all set, I just want to make sure.
I also move.
All right.
As amended?
As amended.
As amended.
And I'll second?
And I'll second, okay, any discussion? Hearing none, then how about saying yes if we vote in affirmative?
Yeah.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay?
Aye, yes, sure.
Yes, okay, five. Any objections, abstentions? Gwen is included, so it's five, Gwen. Jen is included, so that's a 5-0.
And Gwen.
All right. Now, Mr. Schopp has been patiently waiting for us. Because we are moving now. Public hearing, opening the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments for, plural, for 2024 town meeting warrant. Copies of the full text of the proposed amendments are available in the planning notice. So, the first one is amendment number 1 port dash 24, to amend Article 4, District Regulations, Section 4.2, Schedule 1, colon, permitted uses, dash, notes of the Exeter zoning ordinance regarding residential conversions and accessory dwelling units. And I'll announce the next one because Dave's going to lead us through both of those. Amendment number 2 dash 24, amend Article number 6 dash, excuse me, Cis dot 19, mixed-use neighborhood districts of the Exeter zoning ordinance by expanding the provision to apply to the C dash 2 Highway Commercial District, and amending some of the existing language.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll be pretty brief because we went over this in depth in those presentation about it at the last meeting about both of these. And we did make, the board did make some changes to the, talking about the section 4.2, Schedule 1 notes regarding residential conversions and ADUs. And there were four changes that the board made from the last version that we presented at the meeting. That the minimum, the first one was the minimum lot size required shall be such that each dwelling is provided with, it used to be 30% of the minimum lot size, and it became, the board changed that to 25%. So then, a lot that meets the minimum requirement in the zone can get up to four units, assuming they meet the, you know, the other criteria.
Question, should 25 be spelled out the way 30 was spelled out?
Yes, we can, that's not a substantive change, nothing like that, that's just reiterating, I'll put that, I will put that in there. The, the last version, the conversions, little C, when we first presented it, this section, the structure, this provision, the structure has been a residence for a minimum of 10 years, was struck. That was added back, but 10 years was struck and one was its, one was in its place. It was the other change, just so, you know, people can't build it, they have to wait at least a year until they convert if they build it new. The third change was the intent of D, 2D under accessory dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units shall not be allowed in manufacturing housing, period, but then.
What, which, are you still working on this first page?
Still working on the first page, under accessory dwelling units, D.
Down at the bottom of the.
Down at the bottom, 2D.
Got it, yep.
It would be, you add, instead, it was accessory dwelling units shall not be allowed in manufactured housing. And the board added unless located in a zoning district that allows manufactured housing.
Yes.
And the final one is you struck the special exception requirement for ADUs, for accessory dwellings. Residential conversions, the prior version and the existing zoning required special exceptions for residential conversion, which is up to four units, and a special exception for ADUs, which is one additional unit in a, in a, you know, in a, in a home. That, the special exception remains in place for conversions, but the planning board struck the special exception language regarding ADUs. So as long as they meet the criteria according to the building inspector, he can get an issue of building. And those are the four changes. And I do, I was gonna print out a motion, but my printer's not working, so I ended up taking a picture of it, so when you're ready, I will read it.
We just do, we need to do to make it work, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Could you give us a suggested motion, please?
I mean, you have to, I don't know, I guess, you know.
We have to.
Oh, is there any public comments, excuse me, let me open.
The no public here.
To the public. Public comment being, public being fairly scarce this evening. I don't think we're gonna have much input, so I will close the public session, and back to you, Dave.
And potential motion for adoption.
Yes.
You know, you can, you can say it, and then if it gets denied, then it won't go forward, you know, so. I move to forward the zoning amendment to amend Article 4 District Regulations, Section 4.2, Schedule 1, Notes of the Exeter Zoning Ordinance Regarding Residential Conversions and Accessory Dwelling Units to the March 2024 Warrant with a Recommendation for Adoption.
Somebody like make that motion?
I'm fine, I'll so moved.
No other conditions or anything, just a note?
No.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion, anybody? Okay, I'll call the vote, let's make it a hand vote, so it's a major change that we're looking for, so I'll say raise your right hand if, in favor. Any opposition? No, any abstention? No. Okay, Lam is vote on that one. Thank you very much, Dave.
The second one was regarding the mixed-use neighborhood district, which exists in town in the C1 and the WC zoning districts. This amendment, that I won't get into too much detail, but because we went over it thoroughly at the last meeting, will expand the provisions of the mixed-use neighborhood district into the C2, which is basically Portsmouth Ave from Green Hill Road at the lights there by Walgreens, from there north to the Stratum Town Line and the properties that have bought Portsmouth Ave, and then a little, a small section on Epping Road, just, just north of, of Brentwood Road, where like Great Bay Kids, Roma Joe's, meaning, you know, that, that, that area. From there up to the first industrial drive, because industrial drive is a U.
Yes.
You know, the first industrial drive by that, where they park the buses there, that's the C2 section of Epping Road. So it's a small section, and there's not much, you know, opportunity there, but, you know, if it ever gets redeveloped, there will be. And that was, you made one change to the C2 district where we had it at 35 feet on the Epping Road portion that I just described, and I believe it was Vice Chair Brown who made a motion and it passed 6 to 1 to strike 35 and go to 50 feet, four stories.
Yes, I heard, Ben.
So that is the only change that was made to the language that we went over last meeting. And if you want to open and close the public hearing, because no public is here.
You open the public hearing for this particular one? Anyone who has a comment, please step to the microphone and introduce yourself. So we know who's speaking and you know who to throw the popcorn at. So, seeing none, and not having any popcorn coming this way, I'll close the public hearing. And go back to, you have a motion for us, sir?
Yeah, I move to forward the zoning amendment to amend Article 6.19, Mixed Use Neighborhood District of the Exeter Zoning Ordinance by expanding the provision to apply to the C2 Highway Commercial District and amending some existing language to the March 2024 warrant with a recommendation for adoption.
So moved?
Second.
May we have a discussion?
Of course.
Just one thing that I thought I had mentioned before. And it occurs also in, in the amendment A 4.6, it's this height of 50 feet or four stories. Is that synonymous? Because you can, that says it could be more than 50 feet. If four stories is more than 50 feet, I, I just, I don't know.
Uh, that's not the way, I, I get what you're saying, because it says one or the other.
Yeah.
Four stories could be 60 feet, but the maximum building height is not only said here, it's in the zoning ordinance as well, I, I don't, you know, I don't, that's not the intent.
Okay.
Intent is 50 feet, four stories, it almost should be, you know what, I mean, I don't think this is, this is, this is not a substantive change. I don't believe, because we're, we're not changing the intent at all.
Yeah.
We could just put four stories in parentheses. 50 feet, four stories.
Yeah, it, it would.
Okay, I see what you're saying, that doesn't change it, yeah.
Yeah, because it, it's not or, it's.
Yeah, it is, it says an alternative.
I mean, but you're not gonna, you know, yeah, you could, in theory, do four stories, 60 feet, I mean, nobody would.
Yeah, but.
But.
Who knows?
Yeah, no, yes, every, every foot costs money, so. They're not gonna build a, you know, 40, I, I wouldn't imagine it would happen, but I agree with you, so just, we'll, we'll put it in parentheses.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I had that.
It's good.
Before, and it just got lost in translation. And as long as that's, as long as we haven't created such a fundamental change.
And because that's not changing intent.
I don't believe so.
I don't think we have to change the motion, right?
No, I, I just wanted to.
Yeah, it's good. Just in time.
Hey, once again, I arrived.
Editorial section.
Still fast.
Okay, I'm just not sure, who seconded? I motioned it.
Nobody did.
Nobody did, well.
It's Al Lang did.
I thought he did too, but the chair usually doesn't do that.
I don't second.
So, does somebody want to second?
No, no one seconded.
Nobody seconded?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Jen.
I thought I heard a second.
We have a second, okay.
It was a question, it was.
Maybe it was in second, yeah.
I, I threw it all out of whack, I apologize.
That's right, looking for a second, that's right. Okay.
No, I thought there was, never mind, because I was doing it before we were voting.
The chair made a statement and everyone took it as a.
All right.
Yes, okay.
So we have a motion on the table, and I'm not ready to call for the vote, so let's raise our hands for those who are in favor, please. Thank you, and abstentions, or excuse me, objections, those who do not support. Okay, so one opposition and.
I'm sorry.
Five and, four in favor.
Yes.
One opposition.
I didn't know, I'm not in opposition.
No.
I am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm opposing the 50 feet.
Okay, I beg your pardon.
The rebels down here.
I'm the rebel.
I'm yours.
I'm the human skill.
All right, okay. Uh, motion carries. And thank you again, Dave, for leading us through this. Just a little editorial comment on the chairman's part. There's meetings held that we hold in August and in January that I feel are very important to the people of Exeter. And I'm always disappointed that we don't have at least some public here. These are probably two or two major decisions we make each time reviewing the CPI in August. I know we don't approve it, we forward it forth, but it starts here. It's the opportunity for the, for the public to hear the department heads explain the requests and their vision to the future. This one is basically the board's vision of improving the planning process for the citizens and developers proposing. And it just, I wanted to just make that comment, because I think it, it's something some folks are missing on.
Mm-hmm, an opportunity.
So, anyway, thank you for your patience with your, with your chair.
Well, I think it's also because these things are going to impact a number of people.
That's the whole thing.
And.
Something called taxes.
We get down to the warrant article in March, and people might start scratching their heads. How did this come to be? Well, it's their fault, oop, excuse me, I withdraw that.
Well, but that's the other point, though, this is the public hearing for these two articles. They're not gonna be able to deliberate them, or they're still gonna vote on them, but.
Right, and I see what you're saying, Pete, it's that most people, it's been my experience, they, they follow along on certain things, but they really don't look at the ballot for March until it's like time to vote.
Yes, yes.
So, and I can say that just because I work every election, and I've had a lot of people come up, and then I have to tell them I can't explain anything, and, you know, it's hard. We all, I can speak for the board, I'm confident that I can speak for all of the board. The select board, when I say we are always trying to get people to watch the meetings, to come to the meetings, to ask questions, to.
Yep. Okay, moving along, Pete had some comments he wanted to share with us, and I promised I'd give him the.
Well, if, if the board is, the board doesn't have to hear these comments, but they're partially germane to this issue of the purchase, or excuse me, the lot line adjustment occurring off Route 111 that we, I had some issues with it back when it was moved forward. Right now, here is what has happened. Riverwoods has, as most of you know, under consideration, a significantly enhanced, separate-standing healthcare facility, centralized healthcare facility. There was a issue before the zoning board of adjustment when Riverwoods' request for variances was turned down, the appeal was taken to the Circuit Court. And to, in part, solve the problem, Riverwoods determined that it would merge all of the three separate Riverwoods lots. In other words, the Woods has a lot, if you're at all familiar with it, the Woods has a lot, the Ridge has a lot, and the Boulders have a lot. They're going to merge all three of those into a single lot, such that, the wording of the ordinance as it stands now says the healthcare facility has to be on site. If there is a single lot, then the fact that you may have a large building, one place, and three large buildings, Riverwoods has purchased the neighboring property that was under consideration on the lot line adjustment, thereby giving it frontage, pardon me, on Route 111, such that it can merge the two northern pieces, the Ridge and the Boulders, with the much larger Woods piece. We will be eventually seeing a site plan development coming. And I'm not speaking for Riverwoods, I'm merely relating what I'm able to have determined. The, my concern had been how was Riverwoods going to accomplish this? And now it's public knowledge that it has accomplished, at least by the purchase of this additional piece south of 111, opposite, if, man, if you, Gwen, you know where Gooch Park is, and I'm sure that some of you others know where it is. That's part of the, the greater Riverwoods Ridge property. They're gonna merge those three lots such that there will now be a single healthcare facility basically on the site of the existing administrative facility that campus crossing now. All of this may be not meaningful to any of you, but I think it's important that at least I bring to the attention of the board that there will be something of significance coming with respect to this process.
So if I might ask a question?
You may ask a question.
Were these three separate, non, in connection with any, with each other, in physical connection with any of them?
The Ridge and the Boulders had a physical connection, contiguous lot line.
But the Woods obviously.
The Woods did, the Woods did not, because it was the first.
Yes.
And they didn't get, they, there was property purchased and then sold because there had been no real understanding at the Woods back in the 1990s that it would be expanded into two separate distinct properties. I know, Lang, you were probably on the board, and Gwen, you were on the board, but there was considerable, shall we call it, agitation from some of the members, some of the neighbors with respect to the, the Boulders property. But that's, that's in the past.
Yeah, that's all history now.
That's, that's history, but I think the key thing to, that I want to make you all aware is that now Riverwoods will be a, when all the mergers are completed, it will now be a single lot, rather than three lots.
Okay.
And that has meaning, but that's another, another discussion.
Okay.
Just to, just to brief the board, and now we brief the public, and if anyone was listening, now they will know something is going to be occurring with respect to Riverwoods on, or close to 111 and the old, it's old Nemesis pickpocket. Gwen, I'm sure you.
Still getting people's attention.
That was even before my time at Riverwoods.
It used to be at the Seinsham there.
But you probably do.
Of course, it's Forks House.
Rob, Rob's.
Side, yeah, Rob's, yeah.
Okay, that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Okay, any master plan discussion, Dave?
Yeah, just wanted to inform the board that I'm completing, I'm updating my master plan analysis, which I did in April of 2021 on the 2018 master plan update, where I forget the exact numbers, but, you know, 50 of the 67.
At least 50.
Completed or being worked on, so there wasn't, you know, a lot left, and I updated, I'm updating that right now, and there's more that's been completed. And I, it's for the town manager, and once it's completed, I'll share it with the board. But that's why, I mean, it's pretty much almost all of them have been explored and, and so forth, there's a couple remaining, but that's why we put it in the CIP for a master plan update last year. And the CIP that was adopted, you know, includes a master plan update in the future years, I think, 2028. So, we're gonna have the discussion whether that should be moved up and, you know, when, during the CIP process.
Yeah.
And I'll share that analysis with the board, I should have it done next week.
Thank you, appreciate that. Field of modifications?
Yeah, there was a small one, it was just a, they had the new bank out on Meeting Place. They had to move, I forget what, underground, some underground stuff, I think it had to do with drainage, because they found ledge.
Okay, yes.
They just, you know.
Nice piece of ledge.
Yeah, they slid it over this way, had no material effect, the intent, the drainage scheme all remained. But it's something that, you know, when they move stuff like that, you know, it needs a field modification. Which was.
Well, that's the purpose for modifications, and I'm being aware of that. Land use regulations, regula?
Not, we did that.
We did that, thank.
That was on today.
Performance carries, did you find any more money anywhere, for us?
No, we didn't, we didn't do any performance guarantees or reductions or releases, but what we did do is we did thank Barb McAvoy, because not just bonds and releases, you know, we, we went through all them and we're pretty confident we've, we've got all those. But that, well, maybe not, maybe, well, we know where they are at, I don't know where Barb is and has completed them all. But UEI inspections and site plan review. So our third-party engineer, you know, estimates $3,000 for, and the developer comes in, you know, the applicant comes in and, and pays the $3,000, and then sometimes it only costs $2,200.
Yeah.
And there's $800 of UEI funds, and most people don't ask for them back, they just think it's gone. So, but we keep track of it, and I signed a bunch of them today, there must have been 15, that are giving, you know, $300, $200, $800, $500, $3,000, that, that were unused, the projects have gotten a CO, they're all back, so hopefully those people will be happy that are getting some of their remaining funds back.
Do the auditors ever compare that, comment on that, or bring that to anybody's attention?
Oh, comment on what?
About money being held that should be returned and it's not being returned?
Most of them don't.
Huh.
No, not that I'm aware of, they, they don't ask, I mean, a couple of our regular applicants, like PEA, understands, you know, it's like, they've been through it like 18 times, so they do, they will ask when the project's down in the CO, say, you know, can we get this released, and, you know, but they're like the only ones, most people just consider it, you know, and a lot of times it does go to the estimate, so there isn't any, but, you know, there's quite a few that don't. I mean, it's always a couple, you know, maybe $100, a couple hundred dollars. I mean, it's always a couple, you know, maybe $100, a couple hundred dollars or whatever.
So is the.
They never ask for it.
The planning office doing due diligence.
Yeah, and then we kind of every year too, you know, kind of go in there and.
Thank you very much.
Wash them out and get it back, because, I mean, we legally can't keep it. It's not, you know, it's not our money. We, we are legally required to give it back, so.
Yes.
We just don't want to wait 20 years to.
And you can't gain any interest in it, so you might as well get it.
Yeah, give it back.
Get it out of the books. Any announcements?
Yes, I have one more.
Pete? You're having a party?
No. No. A week ago, Friday, there was an article in the Exeter newspaper regarding a traffic study.
Yes.
And a number of folks that I see most every day said, what the hell is that? Oh, excuse me, I shouldn't have said it that way. And I had to say, I wasn't totally sure. So I'm merely raising the fact that, that this reference, Stantec is, has either performing or has performed something.
What an article.
And I'm wondering whether, in fact, this is now more public knowledge than, it's not before the board yet, obviously. It may not be ever.
It won't be before the planning board.
Right.
I've updated the planning board probably, I don't know, multiple times.
Yes.
Yeah, we talked about it not that long ago, because I was trying to encourage people who have already missed the two public hearings that we had across the street to watch them, because they were recorded.
But again, some of those people that asked me.
Yeah.
Did not attend, because they probably didn't pay attention, to be absolutely honest.
That's fine, but it is available on Exeter.
Okay, understood.
Okay.
Understood, but I'm just saying that.
Put that out to them, they can catch.
It's, it's not, not our, not before us, but nonetheless, there's something in the works.
Yeah, it's been going on for a little while, yeah.
Yeah, and I've been updating the board, and I think the last update still stands. The last update was that, that they, they did some draft, they proposed some draft recommendations during their second public input, so they could get input on those draft recommendations before finalizing them. And then they're going to, I haven't, we haven't gotten anything final yet from them, but they are, they're working on it now, and they will be doing a presentation to the select board February 12th.
Is there a public input process besides, like, if you couldn't attend the meeting? Is there like a?
Yeah, there was a survey, I think there was on flyers to email me if you have any comments. A couple of people did call me. I think I probably got five or six people call me, talk to me, you know, send an email. Or usually I just, they had questions, I answered them, and then, you know, they didn't really provide any comment, if you will. They just had questions, I answered them, and, you know, happy to help and anytime. So there's multiple ways, there still is. And, and the thing is, is when, this is just a study and it's just recommendations. So that's going to go to the select board, and then the select board will take those recommendations, and they can do whatever they want with them. They can implement them, they can say no to them, they can say yes to some and no to others. So, and then when they do that, then they'll probably go through a public process. And, you know, there'll be time to, you know, I think this, there's more time to provide input on it. Particularly the night, you know, you're going to hear a presentation of them on the 12th. I mean, if people show, they usually open it up to anybody who's willing to speak on the topic, correct?
Yeah.
So that February 12th, you could provide input.
The first time the select board sees it too, so.
And we did, we did, I mean, we went door to door down downtown and, you know, gave, gave flyers and tried to, you know, drum up some interest from, you know, residents, business owners that, you know, will be affected by the, any parking change or something like that. We did do a couple of round tables, and we got probably a little over a dozen businesses to participate and provide comments. So, again, it's tough, like we were earlier.
And then the town hall, we had two, the town hall and the Q and A. So there were those presentations, and then there was the Q and A.
The survey is closed, but we got, I think we got about 400, I think 426 or somewhere around there. We got about 400 responses.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. That seems to be working the best, but if you want to get input, the survey, pushing it out on social media and stuff, you know, it's.
Especially if it's like kind of a quick, like if it's 30 questions and it's going to take me 20 minutes to fill out, like.
Yeah.
But I feel like quicker surveys.
Yeah, I wouldn't say it was that quick, maybe five, 10 minutes if you, if you provide, because there was options to provide, you know, anything you wanted in writing as well, so. But it wasn't that bad, it wasn't, it wasn't too long, but it asked a lot of, you know, where do you live, where do you work, do you, you know, why do you come into downtown? You know, do you, where do you usually park? Do you, you know, do you, and, and just, they had to ask a bunch of questions to try to gauge, who was it, how long they stay, you know, what's your average stay? But it was pretty short.
How far are you willing to walk?
Yeah, your willingness to walk, you know, how far are you willing to walk.
To your destination.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are the consultants going to provide funding sources? If there were certain projects that the select board did want to maybe pursue? Are they going to provide, like, I mean, I feel like there's so much to do that's not, that they're not looking for projects.
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure if they're going to, in their final, because I haven't got, their draft recommendation didn't mention any funding sources, but it was more geared to what they're physically recommending downtown and, you know, in the, in the study area for, for parking and, you know, traffic and pedestrian.
You know, it's something that could be used in an application for funding.
Yeah, but they, they might include something in their final report, and that's a lot, you know, that would be mine too. I mean, I would identify, try to identify any grant funding for any larger projects that, you know, that the, that the select board is in favor of doing.
Right, so even the Pickpocket Dam, not to get anyone going on that, but, so, right, but, you know, I mean, an opportunity came up to apply for a grant to fully fund removal of the dam. No decision's been made to remove the dam, but we did, did vote to go for the grant, just in case, right? So that's the thing with grants, there could be six or seven.
Get your ducks in order.
Recommend, right, we're not going to pass up a grant in, in the, you know, and then three months later say, yes, we've got to put it on the ballot to take the dam out, and we've just passed up an opportunity for grants to fund it all, right? So, you know, it's, it's hard to explain until we see what's, what's proposed from Stantec.
I guess the question in my mind there is, will we go through the meetings and information that we did prior to removal of the, of the Exeter Dam?
Oh, yeah, that whole process will happen. I, I.
Well, that's what I told, oh, you were in favor, so no, no.
No, we.
We have to have studies to find out what's going.
We're in a feasibility study that's coming up, that will be presented soon.
To come up with the best solution, yeah.
I, I just use that as an example, because.
Yes.
There was that opportunity for full funding, and we had the numbers, so.
Sometimes it takes 10 years to get that funding, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we did not vote.
We see that, you know, when, in Rockham Planning Commission, funding is stuff that goes on when something starts, and maybe something happens in 10 years. More or less.
Yeah.
And it gets adjusted.
We were just trying to be responsible, basically, right? So, anyway.
Well, good discussion, announcements, our next meeting is going to be in two weeks, in February something or other.
I think it's the 8th. Is there anything on the calendar for that? For the 8th of February meeting?
Uh.
Do you have an applicant?
I believe so, yes. Think it's, I think 81 Front Street's coming.
Oh, really?
Single-family home.
Yeah.
They got a zoning board variant, they got a variance in the zoning board to, to convert it into six units.
Six units, okay.
And that, I believe, is scheduled for the February 8th meeting. It might even be something else.
Is it possible that's, agenda's already posted? Because I saw that somewhere and it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, it probably would be posted now, because the.
Yeah, I saw it.
Yeah, the newspaper keep, has moved their deadline back again, so we got to post like.
Oh, I see, yeah, I did see it, and I'm pretty sure I saw it.
It might have been.
Date.
It might have been.
But I think that was the only thing on there. Just don't go.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, because I thought, oh my God, that wasn't that long ago.
Yeah, there was, there was another.
It was approved and there are.
There was another project that we thought was going to be on there, but then they did, they decided not to go to the TRC last week and postpone it. So I don't think it's going to, it's going to be on the 8th.
And these upcoming zoning changes have nothing to do with that project?
What project?
These, these ones that we're going to be voting on? Don't they take effect now that we've moved them to the planning board, to the?
Yeah, they, well, yeah, they have the, well, once you post it, it has the effect of law. People can't take advantage of it, you can't.
And till March.
You know, you can't like issue a building permit on it, I guess they could, but no one's going to apply until March, until they know it passes. But if, if, yeah, if, if, if this like stops somebody from doing something, you know, then, yeah, it would apply, but it doesn't, it's not like that at all. It's, it's, it's making things a little, you know, it's opening things up a little bit more, so. It doesn't have any effect on any of them.
Okay.
Par, uh, the projects before us.
Chairman spoke his items, any representative reports on other committee activities?
No meetings.
Let's pick one up. Would anybody like to motion to adjourn?
Some ought to.
Oh, so moved. Is there a second?
Yes.
I will declare that we. Thank you so much, everybody, for your fine work.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV.